For being nominated by their teachers. For being nominated by their teachers and for consistently demonstrating commitment. We have some fantastic students at PHS. Tonight, Mike DeRoast and the PHS Band Crew Program is hosting the winter concert for the first time in the newly renovated Rose Street Theater. It's been a long time coming. Thanks to the students, families, and Mr. DeRoast for sticking with band. It can be discouraging to practice for two years and not get to perform. Yeah, it's been two years since our last winter concert, so we want to pack that venue tonight. In closing, I want to thank and highlight the work of Joe Zavala, our District Communications Director. Joe has a plethora of knowledge and endless connections to ensure our district gets the positive press it deserves. We've always known that our kids and staff are the best, but Joe has helped us take that to the next level so that everyone in the state knows this information. Thanks, Joe, for your fantastic work. And I hope all of you board members have a.
I think, thank you very much, Toby. We got most of that. I will have Kent speak next, please.
Good evening, Chair Watson and members of the board. Kent Valier, Principal at Talent Middle School. Tonight, I want to just highlight three great things that have happened and are happening at middle school. This week, twenty-seven of our middle school students worked together to compete against area middle schools in the yearly Southern Oregon University Scavenger Hunt. They began completing a few challenges such as making a recipe or stacking a tower of apples, and then they had to scour the internet and find answers to fifty-one questions. Today, they were given a chance to defend their answers, and we are really anxiously awaiting the final results. I want to thank Sandra Tringalo a great deal for helping our students compete in this, and she tells me that our kids did very well and competed strongly against neighboring districts. I'd also like to brag about Julie Stinson and her leadership on our wellness team at TMS. Also highlight Lisa's work with that, Lisa Rollman's work as well. We started a wellness loop, a wellness newsletter called Inside Out. It highlights local events at various venues, some healthy eating tips, and social events for our staff and healthy reminders so we don't lose sight of our staff's wellbeing. It's been a fun week. I've been meeting with a little group of student leadership team of some eighth graders. We're planning our Spirit Week next week, and they've also been helping decorate a little bit of the building for the holidays. And it's just been fun to visit with those students. They act as a little bit of an advisory board for me. And it's been a long time since I've been in middle school as a student, and it helps to see some of the issues and things that they're dealing with through a student's eyes. So I'm thankful for all that's happening and all the staff that we have at Talent Middle School. And that's my report. So thank you all.
Heather, can you go next, please? And then could you call someone next? It's easier if you guys do that for me.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair Watson and Board. Heather Low Rogers, the Principal over at Talent Elementary. And things are going really good on the Mustang Prairie. I've got lots of stuff to share with you. First, I just want to give a huge shout out to Greg Rowe and our partners over at Boys and Girls Club. I don't know if Brent's going to share this, but sorry if I'm stealing your thunder, Greg or Brent, but they have donated an incredible gift to our district of thirty thousand dollars in gift cards that are going to go to sixty very deserving families. So just thank you so much, Greg, for your partnership and just always to the Phoenix Talent community. We really appreciate that partnership and just your amazing leadership. And I didn't just do that because you were on. You were definitely top of my list. I also wanted to share that today Kurt and Shawna and I got to meet with Family Connection, and we are planning some parenting classes coming up this winter and spring. So we're excited about that partnership as well. We'll be sharing more as that rolls out. Also, I wanted to update you on the Rogue World Music Partnership that we have doing. Travis Puccinelli, he's coming to our elementary schools. He's at Talent this week, was at Phoenix last week, and will be at Orchard Hill next week. And he is going to be rotating through the elementary schools, just providing some awesome elementary music education. So grateful for that. Also, I'm sure you saw this, but we were able to serve thirty-eight families in our family photo shoot a couple of weekends ago, and that has just been such a fun project. I've been editing and ordering prints for days and cannot wait to gift those to families next week. Lastly, just a quick update. We had an incredible conference week right before Thanksgiving and had about eighty-nine percent of our families show up either in person or virtually, and it was just a real special event for us to welcome families back for a conference. So that's it from Talent. I'll kick it up the road to Shawna.
Thanks, Heather. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair Watson. I'm Shawna Schleif, Principal at Phoenix Elementary School. And thank you, Heather, for just summing up some of the great things that have been going on around the district. I just wanted to highlight a few other things that are going on kind of in the classrooms and things. One of the practices that we have with our mentor teachers and our new teachers is the ability to go around and view each other or go to other schools and view each other's classrooms. And so that is just an amazing way for people to learn new skills and strategies by watching each other. And even today, one of our mentor teachers is like, she's like, this is even, this is great for me too, even as a teacher that's been teaching for twenty-plus years. So just thank you to our district for allowing, opening their doors and allowing teachers to come in and learn from each other. Wanted to also share, we're in our second round of Ebis right now, and it's just really amazing to see the collaboration amongst our staff and with our coaches and looking really solidly at our data and our new strategies for intervention to help support students learning and reading and math. And so just the trend is going in the right direction, and that feels really amazing. And then finally, I just want to give a shout out to our PLC process. I know we talked about it at our JAB meeting, but this week I want to give a shout out to Pam, our coach, our instructional coach, and then our kindergarten team, Christian Tsukairos, Amy Hartley, and Jennifer Hawkins. They're doing a quick action research project where they collected quick data. They're each deciding on a very similar strategy or, I mean, the exact same strategy, and then they're going to just do a quick three-week feedback loop just as a way to kind of measure our impact. And so I just want to give them a quick shout out as well. We're going to be doing a winter assembly next week. We're pretty excited about that. So we're getting our singing voices juiced up. And then also, I just want to also shout out to Travis, our new music teacher. I got to sit in on two of his classes, and it was just a mixture of singing and storytelling and just the kids were so engaged. The staff was engaged. It was a really positive experience, first of all. So all good things happening here. Kurt, you're up next, buddy.
Thank you, Shawna. Good evening, Board. Madam Chair Watson, Kurt Schenk, Principal at Orchard Hill Elementary School. And I'm getting a huge echo back. I don't know if you guys were or not also there. Yeah, anyway, all right, Orchard Hill Elementary School. I want to give us a couple of shout outs to start off with. First of all, Casey Calhoun, she is a parent here at Orchard Hill, and must have been October or something. She reached out to us and said, hey, I think we need a safety patrol person down on the crosswalk at One Apparel. You got any equipment for me to use? So we had equipment, and she's been doing it since then. And just what a blessing. She's really caring and concerned, and we've exchanged some emails here lately. And she loves doing what she's doing. She says enjoys the kids and loves their attitude and their politeness. So shout out to Casey for that. Shout out to Annie Prest. Annie has retired after, and I was going to get the actual number of years this afternoon, and I didn't make that phone call, unfortunately. But it's upper twenties, twenty-eight, twenty-nine years she's been serving students here at the district, and she has put in her retirement. You guys approved that. But her final days are coming up. She'll finish, her last day will be the seventeenth of December, just before winter break. And so just a big thank you for all the years of service and care and support for our students here in the district for Annie. Also, I want to give a shout out. Stephanie Hayes transferred over here to be our new PE teacher. And I just, you know, it's a challenge when we kept having to have substitutes in there and stuff, and she's just doing a phenomenal job. She's so organized and on top of things. And just the structure and her organization has settled things down, definitely in the PE class and gym, but it's kind of impacted the whole school. You can really feel that the kids are calmer just because of her consistency and the way she's running the program in there. So shout out to Stephanie. Thank her. And Kent mentioned wellness group there at the middle school. Ashley Sims put in for OEA Wellness Grant to kind of for the district. It had to be a district-wide, and I believe she was granted that. Brent might have some additional information on that to share. I'm not sure, but I know that it looked like we, from what I heard from Ashley, that she had received that. So we're going to get to benefit from that effort that Ashley put forth. So thank you, Ashley, for that. And then a shout out to my awesome colleague, Heather, just because she kind of initiated that parent class, and it's kind of something we've talked about for many years. And so without her initiative to step up and have conversations and get the ball rolling, this wouldn't be happening. And all three of us elementary principals are just thrilled to have this opportunity to serve our families and our parents. We know there's help that needs to be out there, and this is going to be a great collaboration with the Family Connection Center. And so we're really looking forward to that. So thank you, Heather, for what you did there. And then my final shout out, just to my entire staff. They just continued to just impress me, amaze me at their collaboration and teamwork. Anytime anything comes up, any little thing comes up, there's just numerous people who jump in and say, hey, I can do this. I can do that. And man, when you've got people that are willing to, you know, step in and, you know, the old saying, many hands make light work, make light work, that's the case here at Orchard Hill. And it's a blessing to be a part of it, to be leading it. So thank you to all my staff, classified, custodian, certified. They're just a phenomenal team. And I just want to give a good note of appreciation for them. And that's it from Orchard Hill Board. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Santi.
Kurt, Aaron Santi, Principal at Phoenix Talent Rising Academy. Just a few notes for you guys. Tomorrow, we're going to be having our second school-wide field trip. We're going to be heading out to Wildlife Images. I think we have more than fifty students that have committed to come, and the parents are all transporting those students. So there's no buses involved. So that's quite a commitment for those families. So appreciate that. We're looking forward to a good time. Our middle school teacher, Heather Ayers Flood, has created a PTRA Survival Guide for Parents. That's been a great document. As you guys know, things are brand new for us. And so having some assistance for parents to help guide them through all the processes have been very helpful for our parents, and I appreciate Heather's time and effort she's put into that. Finally, I want to thank Denny Goodwin and Tracy Koah. They put a good deal of time into an attendance policy and guidance document for our PTRA students. As you guys know, attendance in a virtual school is a little different than physical. And so it's taken a little bit of time to get that dialed in, but I appreciate the work that Denny and Tracy have done. They've done a great job. So thanks to those guys. And that'll do it from PTRA. And I don't think we have any other district administrators on right now. So Chair Watson, I will kick it back to you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have accentuate the positive?
I'd like to.
Sure, Rick.
We just had Thanksgiving, and I've been doing a little reflecting on my involvement with the school board. And it was really great to have our Superintendent of the Year here. But there's another person I'd like to take hats off to, and that's you, Don. You took over during some trying times, and you've risen to the occasion. And you followed somebody that was a very strong person and active statewide as well as local, and you've stepped into those same shoes and you're doing the same thing. And again, during some really trying times. Looking at some of, you took over when we had new construction going on. The fire affected us, the pandemic. We've had some anxious constituents on issues, and that was evidenced by how many people ran for office this last year. And you're also taking on the leadership of basically a new board, and you're handling that with just terrifically. And you're very pleasant to deal with, and I just can't say enough. You're open, and so along with our superintendent, we've got a great chairperson of the board.
Well, thank you very much for those really, really kind words. I appreciate them. And I have been trying to do my best as much as I can, so I appreciate you recognizing that I'm doing my best I can. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. So next is, sorry, I got a little bit off track here. Next is public comment.
We have.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is not next public comment. Next is Student Representative Report, and Joseph is joining us today. The other two representatives had activities that they are involved in tonight.
Phoenix High School, we are in our second quarter. And a few things that have been going on, kind of to go with what Mr. Walker said, the blood drive has been happening, and I've heard a lot of students like signing up, and leadership will come into classes, and there'll be a lot of students signing up to help with that. And also, leadership has been one of the favorite things at the school during the holiday times is leadership sells chocolate bars. And so that's been going on, and so far, I think it just started today. And I've seen a lot of people buying chocolate bars so far, so that's good. Another thing is the staff and Mr. Walker at the high school have done a really amazing job of creating and enforcing a safe and friendly environment for the students to feel welcome and comfortable. And one final thing, we've all been really happy that we no longer have to wear masks outside. And so it's helped us to build a better community and get to know each other better. And yeah, that's what I got.
Thank you very much. We always enjoy listening to the student reports. Okay, next up is Citizens Comment. Sorry for jumping ahead on that. We did get one email, Citizens Comment, from Charles Wilson, who is with the American Legion Post, and he wants from Grants Pass. And he wanted to let the school know that there is some scholarship opportunity through their organization. And if you have questions about that, you can reach out to the district office, and they will let you in on that. So, but do it quickly because I think the deadline is on December eighteenth. So it looks like a great opportunity for our students. So next up is my speech about public comment. As a reminder, these meetings of the board of directors are meetings in public versus public meetings. Any comments from those joining us virtually will come from under public meeting law. Please know that comments will be heard during the Citizen Comment time on the agenda only and must be limited to three minutes with thirty minutes total for all comments. Please do not expect the board to respond to comments at this time. The board cannot hear in public complaints directed towards an employee. Those complaints should be presented to the employee's immediate supervisor in person or in writing. If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand or write your name in the chat feature, like some of you already have. All oral comments and chat comments are electronically recorded. When I call your name, please unmute yourself and have your camera turned on if possible and speak clearly. For the record, please state your name and an organization if you represent one. If you've submitted written comments, please summarize those instead of word for word. Please be respectful and limit your comments to three minutes. As a reminder, you may also submit written comments by completing a public comment form located on our website under the School Board tab. Written comments should be submitted no later than 5:00 PM the day before the meeting. Comments received will be shared with the board. The district also has a FAQ section underneath the Board tab with commonly asked questions. I am now opening up public comment. Are there any members who wish to comment? And I believe the first one is Zach Moody.
Thank you, Chair and Board. I'm actually here to comment tonight on a couple of things. One is hopefully the school board will have an opportunity tonight to discuss the opportunities for those of us that are standing outside tonight for the meeting to come in and actually be part of this meeting and be able to participate in person going forward. As you can see, there's other activities going on. You have sports activities going on. You have a concert tonight, which was just announced. So there's no reason that a group of eight or nine of us that are out here this evening can't come into this building and have public comment with this board. Second, I'd like to discuss in regards to your comments about when public comment is heard. I think the school board should take a really good look at what other city governments do and try to maybe model their public comments and their meetings based upon what local jurisdictions do. And what I mean by that is when a jurisdiction has council meeting or a planning committee meeting or some other type of public meeting, there's an opportunity to comment at the beginning of the meeting on non-agenda items, and then there's an opportunity to comment on agenda items. There are a couple of items on the agenda tonight that were not accompanied by a staff report. So we have really no idea what the context of them are, particularly two resolutions at the end of the meeting that have a lot of deleted text and policies, but no substantial documentation as to why that is. So when it's their opportunity to, for the superintendent to speak on that, we no longer have an opportunity as a public to comment on what's being told. So we would like to have the school board start thinking about the opportunity to allow comments on agenda items and non-agenda items in their respective order so that we can make effective comment. So I appreciate that. Again, we'd like to really have you guys consider letting us in the building next time so that we can come in and actually do this face to face where it's not so cold. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comments? Anyone else wanting to speak? I'm seeing no. Is that correct? Okay. Public comment is closed. Thank you all. We are now going to Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair Watson. I have a number of things to share tonight. First and foremost, you may have seen the boxes over here. They're charcuterie that the foods classes made for you to take home to enjoy. So thank you to Christie Sanders, who's been filling in in that class as the teacher and the students that she said it was all them and putting those together. So that's great. And we had many donated items as well. So make sure you take one of those before we leave tonight. Next is, you may have remember a couple of weeks ago, right before we left for Thanksgiving break, and it was during parent-teacher conferences, there was a statewide announcement about tests to stay and masks outdoors. And really, true fashion, it was right before a weekend, and we were notified on some of those options. But as we always do with our staff and really kind of just rally the troops and get the information out, and we were able to implement both of those with really no disruption in the days right after Thanksgiving. So thank you for staff on that. We did get a chance, whether fortunately or unfortunately, to try the test to stay last week, and it worked as intended. So that was good to see. There's a document in your blue folders about tests to say as well that clarify some things. Also in your blue folders is the wellness policy. Each year, we have to essentially review and discuss the wellness policy. We typically do that in this meeting. Last year, we did it in a February meeting. But it's a chance to share a little bit about what we're doing for wellness for students and staff. As you hear every time on Accentuate the Positive, you hear examples of our wellness teams in our buildings and the intention about, you know, really taking care of our staff and our students. So I think this year, there is a lot more intention, and I feel a lot. I feel good about what we're doing and how our teams in our schools are really highlighting wellness and providing activities and time to make sure that that happens for our students and our staff. And as you know, Mr. Schenk shared that Ashley Sims applied for that grant. I actually haven't heard that we received it, but I'm anticipating that we will here soon. So we've received that grant before, and it's been fun to utilize some funds for wellness activities. Also, we have openers for PTEA and OSEA, our associations this year. They are openers just for financials, so they won't be openers for the whole contract. I do encourage board members that may have not sat through and worked on an interest-based bargaining team to participate in those. This might be a time to do that because I think they will be fairly quick with just a couple articles to discuss. And if you're interested in that, please let me know. We do have a quick refresher tomorrow at 3:30. I know it's late notice, but Dale Rooklin, who is our IBB guru, typically does some refreshers every once in a while. And if you can make that, we'd love to have you. If not, we'll have another refresher later in the spring. We also have established a parent observation procedure. We established a protocol in August. We haven't implemented that yet due to some, you know, the case rates and really getting schools started. But after the first of the year, we'll be sharing it. That's an option for parents to come in and observe their child's classroom, and we'll get that information out to parents. The procedure and protocol is in your blue folders to take a look. Application for the seismic is now open. As you know, we're going to reapply for Talent Elementary and Talent Middle School. Those are the two remaining projects on the bond, and we have decided to delay those a little bit. We won't do any construction this coming summer in hopes of being selected for a seismic grant, which will again continue to extend our bond dollars to really serve this community. We're hopeful. We were a little disappointed last session, our last round, that we didn't receive one of the grants, but we're hopeful this time around. Also, I just want to bring it to your attention in your blue folders. ODE at the beginning of the year shared that they're suspending some evaluation requirements. We've been discussing that with our evaluation committee and our association and our administrators, and Jessica Hamlin's been working with staff on that. We are sharing a plan with you in the blue folders. It's a hybrid. I mean, not to use the word hybrid, but there's still some, you know, things to, that will stay in place, but it'll also have some leeway as well on that when this is a very difficult year, you know, with coming back from a pandemic and a Alameda fire. But that is, that's something that is going on statewide. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those as well. Also, in your blue folder, and this is really great to talk about, is next Wednesday Tiffany Lambert and myself will be joining students to take the. Tiffany Lambert and myself will be joining students to take the Mansonita sculptures up to McKenzie and Saniam Canyon School Districts as a gift to recognize their, their challenge in a fire impacted community as well. So we look forward to sharing some photos and dedicating that to those districts and really kind of continuing that bond that we share. And to continue with that, the bond that we share is ADM security. And there's an example of the McKenzie School District School Board letter to the legislative leadership about the importance of ADM security. And it is important for us all. Phoenix Talent has the biggest impact on that ADM comparatively. Not to make light of the other two district struggles, they're smaller school districts. But it is, it really is important for us as we've discussed many times. Pam Marsh will be sharing a bill, introducing a bill. And we are confident that that will go through when they start the short session. But we can never be too, too confident. I think we need to continue to share our story and talk with our legislatures about the importance of that ADM security for our community. I think that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for Brent? Hearing none, I'm moving on to the program report with Culver Property Road. Brent, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, this is also another fun topic. You know, it's, you may ask, why, why do we take these things on? And this is a potentially really big project, but it's super exciting. We've been really looking at how to maximize this property for a long time. And I think the time is right to really do that. John McHale is going to share some information where we are now. It's just a brief report. You have some information in your packet, but we also have some visitors today. Greg from Boys and Girls Club, Aaron Parent is represented the Little League. And I think Amber and maybe Mike from cross country are joining us too that will want to share. So, but I'll turn it over to John to kind of give you the, the latest on where we are.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. John McHale, Director of Facilities, always happy to be here. And just for the board members that weren't here in 2017, the board passed or adopted a resolution 17-8 designating up to 12 acres on the easternmost portion of the Culver property to be surplus. That was due to our 30-year plan. At the time, we planned to move facilities at some point in the land could eventually be sold to benefit the district. In November, though, we received letters of intent from Boys and Girls Club and from Little League to do a joint venture using the majority of the entire property. In the long-range facility plan, it dictated that moving ODP out of their current facility and moving them to Culver property would be a good idea. And having the Boys and Girls Club and Little League and ODP and all of the other activities in a sports complex is very exciting. To do this, we will need to amend the UGB with the City of Talent. If we decide to move forward with this, CSA will write the amendment and we would submit to the city. There will be some negotiations with the city because we will write the amendment contingent upon them building the road, being responsible for building the Wagner Creek Road Extension when it is, when it does happen. It's an exciting opportunity to build a community center that will benefit everyone in the Phoenix Talent community. And with that, I will pass it off to Greg.
Can you hear me? All right, Madam Chair, Board, thank you for having us. Yes, this is a very exciting time. We've been, I don't know, some of you may know, we've been at the Talent Elementary School, serving Phoenix and talent kids for almost 30 years. And we've been looking just because, you know, Principal Heather and Principal Kurt before that have always been so good about trying to give us space, but space has really been limited over the years. We serve 147 kids. Generally, that's 150 is normally our average. We could easily serve a lot more children, you know, at $30 a month for after-school programming. I mean, that's, we have a high demand, but limited space. And we have been looking for quite a while and this opportunity kind of came up. And what we've been doing at other communities, we just opened a community center, a brand new community center in the Illinois Valley, and they are so excited. But you know, what we envision is Boys and Girls Club in conjunction with working with the Outdoor Discovery Program there, where we would build a Boys and Girls Club that is slash a community center. Where, where the exciting partnerships could happen is, you know, Boys and Girls Clubs always have a large gym, maybe double gym, kitchen, IT, you know, an IT lab for, you know, homework. We have all kinds of other programming, a science room. We're an after-school program that focuses on education. But really, this is kind of a great way to partner with Outdoor Discovery Program and other people in the community, community to, you know, offer, you know, services together. You know, for example, if we have a gymnasium, they don't need to build a gymnasium because they could use that. If we have a USDA kitchen like we have here in Grass Pass, I don't know if any of you have ever seen the Boys and Girls Club in Grass Pass, but this is kind of what we envisioned. This is a, you know, it's a, it's a community center for education and kids. That's really what we're envisioning and we're really open to all kinds of ideas. But really what it comes down to is, you know, like I was telling the group, you know, the Phoenix Talent kids, they've always deserved that, deserve their own place to be after school. But if they don't deserve, I mean, what other time in, in the, in the, you know, history of the school district has these kids deserve it as much as they do now. When we were doing our distance learning program, Principal Heather was so good about giving us space for those kids who had lost everything. And, you know, we, our staff was helping with the distance learning program. It'd be nice to be able to have that space, you know, I mean, again, it could be used for emergency uses too. Just thinking up, just off the top of my head, if something like this ever happened again, having these type of facilities where the schools could use us. They do that here in Grass Pass now in Illinois Valley. That's kind of what our dream, we've always dreamed of having a club, a standalone club in, in the, in Talent Phoenix. And this has just been, this is a great opportunity. And when they put us possibly on the map, I had a heart attack with joy. So I guess any questions?
I don't know the answer to this. So you're joining with ODP is, are the classrooms for ODP, would they move to this facility? Or is this just something they would use?
Well, first of all, it's very, very preliminary, but it could be a joint venture. But it's something that the ODP teachers and board has always wanted to have their own space.
For years.
Yeah, for years and years. It, that could open up the opportunity for the current ODP place for a preschool or some other uses as well. So.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and we're not saying we'd be part of the school, but we would have facilities if we did build a school. That would be available for them, of course.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Aaron, are you on from the Little League?
Yep, I'm here.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Phoenix Talent Little League tonight. Little League is super excited about the opportunity to potentially move our league to the Culver Road Facility. We've been in our current location for just over 40 years now on Rogue River Parkway in Talent. But unfortunately, our lease is set to expire in 2025. And so the thought of this move being a long-term solution is very exciting for the league. On average, we serve about 150 families, Phoenix Talent families each baseball and softball season. And we believe this new facility would make a considerable difference in the ability to meet and exceed the growing needs of our community. And we also know that, you know, studies have shown the tremendous benefits that students and children who, the benefits that they get from participating in youth sports. And, and the relocation as part of this expansion not only enhances the Little League facility, but because it's a long-term solution, it gives the Little League board confidence in our stability as we continue to grow our program. And we also understand that this extensive program is in the beginning phases. But we would just love the opportunity to be able to be a part of it. And we, of course, support the urban growth boundary and we look forward to hopefully collaborating with the school district to relocate our facility. So thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Is Amber or Mike on? A call to talk about some uniqueness of cross-country out there? I, I don't, I don't see them, but I'll try to, you do have letters of intent for, in your blue folders. The reason we wanted Amber or Mike who were involved in cross-country is, and our former employee, Alan Boss, who used to be a cross-country coach as well and in our maintenance department, really built themselves, you know, one of the, the best cross-country venues that, that there is in Southern Oregon. The college uses it, wants to hold events there continuously, is already asked to hold their, the SOU's conference meet there for cross-country next year. And when you're moving dirt, it, sometimes that jeopardize that cross-country. But I think they just wanted to share how much that has benefited the, you know, the cross-country community, which is, which is alive and well in our area. And we have many standout athletes in cross-country and track. At one time, four years, three or four years ago, we hosted the biggest meet maybe in the state where we started off with middle school meet, then we had the high school, then we had the college right after that. So in the same day, so it was, it's pretty cool to see. So, so the next steps, actually, our council, CSA, Jay Harlan and I have a meeting next week with the city to discuss this potential new amendment to, to display really the demand necessary for the entire property coming into the UGB. And so we will find out more information of what that entails and we will be happy to share with the board. You may be thinking, this is not going to be cheap. So funding, again, it's, it's a long process, but there are already talks about, you know, Boys and Girls do, Girls Club doing a funding campaign and some other grants that we may be able to utilize as well. So, so we're looking forward to continuing the process. I did put a draft of a map in your folder, which I don't want you to get too stuck on that. If you were involved in the bill, the planning of this building, what we were discussing on, in the first few weeks is much different than what we, we ended up with. And that process really works and we, we ended up with an amazing facility here. And, and we'll, we'll utilize that same process when the time comes for, for that piece of property. So I'll entertain any questions, but as you can see by the people that have been sharing, Dave is actually at a conference in Denver. Dave Erhor, he is extremely excited about the potential. Another discussion is putting an indoor facility out there because, you know, really an indoor facility could be all year around with the smoke that we've been experiencing the last several years. So that would really, in Dave's word, be another game changer for the Pirates. So. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Sarah's been involved in every meeting, so she may have something else to share.
This is real, this opportunity to consolidate and really expand a lot of our programs together in a really centralized location for our families is a really huge opportunity. So it's exciting again to be on the beginning stages of another really big project. And I think that we've shown that we know how to tackle those and really leverage funds to maximum purpose. So, you know, I think we've got a really great track record to continue to move forward. And I think a partnership with Boys and Girls Club and, and Little League and, and just really what this would mean for our community is fantastic. So, super excited.
Sarah, are you advocating for a pool in Disney facility?
Well, gee Nancy, now that you mention it, John already told me that he's like Sarah. I have ideas, I could bring Jim Heathen, but he's probably at his, yes, outdoor swim practice this evening and it's 30-degree weather. So yeah, let's talk about an indoor pool.
Any other questions? Thank you guys all for working on this. I know how hard it is and I am so excited to see all the good work and this is a great team. And I know that you guys will do your best. And John, I know he's going to work his magic and find us more grants because that's what he does. So I expect a lot of grants finding from you, John. And so I'm really, really excited with, for the community input and for building this for the community and the partnerships that seem very, very excited to join us. So thank you all for your very, very hard work. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, which consists of approval of the revised agenda, the approval of the minutes for 11:421, approval for the minutes of 11:1821 jab work session and the personnel report that's in your blue folders.
I second that.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Nancy. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, consent agenda passes. Moving on to action items, the first action item is board policy ACB. Brent, do you want to start us off on that?
Yeah, this is something from the legislature that is required to be passed that goes into effect on January 1st. And we discussed this at last board meeting and we'll entertain any questions.
Do we have any questions or comments?
Make a motion?
Yes, please.
I move the board approved changes to policy ACB as presented.
I second that. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Polly. Any discussion before I take this to a vote? Hearing none, I'm taking it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the policy passes. Next is board policy ACB, the AR, the AR that we can get to do. Any questions or discussion on this? Seeing none, do I have a motion or Sarah?
Oh, I was just going to say I wanted to thank Tiffany for preparing and Denise for sending out the follow-up information. That was really helpful in seeing how this would be implemented. So I'll move the board approved changes to policy ACB AR as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Rick. Do we have any discussion before I take it to a vote? Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And I vote yes, board policy passes. It is scheduled for recess. Do we want a quick recess or do we want to forge on? Maybe a quick one? Okay, let's take a quick, like seven-minute recess. Joseph, if you would like to go home and do homework or whatever you need to do. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for that short break. We will move on to facilities and bonds update. John, I believe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. John McHale, Director of Facilities. Pretty short update today. We're very close to substantial completion on the remodel portion of PHS. Probably substantial completion before the end of winter break. And then, just a bunch of punch list items for a month or so. The theater was turned over yesterday and as you heard, there's a concert going on today. We do still have some training and programming on the lighting to do to have full use of the theater. But I believe cheerleading is even planning on practicing in there. So, it's, it's a great space. The maintenance facility is also nearly complete. I myself moved in there on Monday and the maintenance crew will begin moving there next week. And that is it for the facilities report.
Any questions for John?
I have one. This is Sarah. Any update on the fire alarms?
The devices came in. We look to have fire alarms by next Friday. We should be no more fire watch, which is very exciting.
That is great news. Now, I have a question, if you don't mind. Does that mean that the, that parking lot will be open up eventually or?
Yes, actually, a droid is working on mobilizing to get their trailers and Connex is out. And I believe the fencing is going to leave by the end of next week. So, we are, we are very close. By the time we return from winter break, that parking lot should be completely open. No more fencing and quite a few less contractors.
Nice. Any other questions? Okay, now, financial update?
Yeah, we'll save most of the financial update for the audit review. And then, next month, we'll have a financial report for the board.
Thank you. Next up is legislation and OSBA, which is me. And I apologize, I was doing my notes and I've had like two OSBA board meetings, a PACE board meeting, two board chair meetings that were statewide and two board chair meetings that were regional, all between this meeting and the last meeting we had. So, I will try to make it very quick. And some of the stuff, I'm going to move down to the resolution section of discussion. But in OSBA, we have been working on our, discussing our goals and our equity statement. And the last two have been in-person, which has been, been much more productive. And it's been nice to talk to different board members to see what they're doing and get suggestions from them. I've also been doing the Board Chair Cafe, which is virtually. And it, the last one was, was quite a bit of attendance and it was so nice to see. We've kind of got the bump, some bumps out of the way and the format has changed. And it's very nice to see different boards helping the other boards with questions and solutions. And, and it was, it was a very nice meeting. And then, PACE, PACE, we're still talking about lawsuits and the pool and cybersecurity is huge. And that's pretty much it. The next OSBA board meeting will also be in conjunction with the LPC meeting. And I believe, hopefully Sarah will be joining me, fingers crossed. And we should know, is it December 18th we should know, Sarah? The 15th. Oh, yes. I have the 17th. Okay. Well, but maybe, we'll see. Okay, so that is, any questions for me before I move on? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to the Almeida Fire Update.
Yeah, you may have seen some stories that we've been moving families into the gateway in talent. And that's been a positive for many families. Rogue Retreat is continuing to work through applications to move families in. Tracy Koa has been instrumental in communicating with families and in connecting families to applications and in that process. I also will share access. Matt Havner is, he's coordinating the funds that the state, the access received from the state to help families move in, put down payments on, you know, deposits in and things of that nature. And they're going to be instrumental in the permanent housing search for those families as well. So, it's moving along. It is coming at a good time when it's getting colder. And we will continue to see that community grow as, as in the coming weeks. So, and that's about it. There are still many meetings, weekly and monthly meetings on recovery efforts. As you know, there's a tremendous amount of funds coming through to support this area, which is, which is very much appreciative, but it takes some time to really be implemented with those funds. So, that's it.
I wanted to add something. We were at that same meeting this last week for, I don't know, it's like recovery. I don't remember what the person is, but it's across the county. There are still 207 hotel rooms occupied by fire victims. And this is from ODHS, this, these, this data. And that represents 372 survivors that are still in hotels. And also 54 RV spaces at Southern Oregon RV and at Immigrant Lake that are still there. So, I just, it's funny how we go through life and we forget that there are still a lot of people that do, are houseless. And you know, that really speaks to something also that this doesn't count all those people that moved in with family or aren't counted in this group. So, during this Christmas season, I feel like I, I think about them and what they're going through. This is a hard time for them. Also, I heard that there was seven parks that were taking people, right? Seven parks that were housing people in that meeting. Anyway, it's hard to hear those numbers. And I'm, I'm glad to see us having some recovery, especially for our families that have been affected. That's all I have.
I also might add, you might have seen it on the news and it's very unique. If it's ever happened before in our, in our country, that there's an opportunity to purchase a FEMA trailer. So, it's a program there. And so, there was, there was a lot of interest in that. They do, still do have to respond here fairly soon if they want to be enrolled in a purchase program for that. So.
Anything, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I will move on to diversity, equity and inclusion report.
I can share. I didn't attend the last meeting last week, but I do know that there's a focus, starting to narrow down the focus on, you know, what to work on this year. And after the first of the year, I think we'll be implementing some plans to choose two of those to, to really work on and the need. We do have some, you know, work that's going on other than that committee. The middle school has DL Richardson coming in and our in-service day in January also resolves coming into as well to do some training. So, that's all I have from DEI. If anybody else wants to share, they can.
Yeah, from that meeting, there was a Google form that was sent out to the committee that, that is the top, the top three are going to be picked as initiatives. And they gave special attention to not duplicate efforts that were already being done, but actually new things to start. So, there, besides those three things, there are many other things that are happening without, throughout the district that they are focusing on as well. So, it's not just those three things that are coming. So. Yes, please.
So, can you maybe say what the three things are?
There was a list of nine or 10. Nancy, did you see that form yet?
I did. I was actually just going to pull up the.
I could say, I could speak to a couple of them. One is developing the talented gifted program. And also bias training at staff meetings. And then, you might have to help Nancy because I can't remember off the top of my head.
Hiring an occupational therapist for our district, mentorship programs for students such as college to high school, high schoolers to middle school and middle schoolers to elementary schools, blueprint for inclusion and inclusive practices, with a focus on students and IEPs and then focus on talented and gifted programs, which Polly just mentioned, developing common vocabulary and responses for staff to use when addressing discrimination and bias with students, developing a required training, like a state schools training on implicit bias and microaggressions, affinity support groups for students and staff at schools such as LGBTQ plus, BIPOC, which stands for Black Indigenous People of Color, Latino AX and et cetera, language accessibility and interpretation use training for staff for conferences or IEP meetings and inclusive practices and trainings for staff around non-binary trans LGBTQ plus students. So, there is a really nice comprehensive list of options for, for us to really focus on in the coming year.
And then, you're going to pick three? Is that what the plan is? Yeah, three of those.
So, there's a voting system and then the top three will arise. And then, I'm assuming that there will be like some objectives and.
They're going to build committees. Build committees based on those things.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Based on the top three?
Yes.
I just wanted to, I'm not sure if this is where to make a suggestion to the committee or. So, if this isn't appropriate, then I won't do it and just will send an email or?
Speak away, I think.
So, last year when the board approved the equity policy, there was a little bit of talk about an AR so that, an understanding of how the equity policy would be implemented. And I just, it sounded like maybe the. And I just, it sounded like maybe the blueprint suggestion might be how it, so I just wanted to maybe make a suggestion or a plug for how the district is implementing this overall as a tool for all of us to use and really understanding how to take action for this policy.
Okay, I can take that back to them.
Thank you.
I'm not sure about if that's the blueprint one or not. I can't remember.
Blueprint just sounded.
Well, that's.
Architectural.
It did sound, and I think that's what it is, but I'm not positive. But you're, you're correct. I agree with you that there needs to be something, you know, an overall arching mission, I guess.
And I don't know necessarily about the structure, but I really appreciate that you brought that up, because this can be like a way for us to have that bilateral communication between the board and the EDI committee, and how to be just stay informed on, on both ends. So I, thank you for setting up, setting it up like that.
Anything else before I move on? Okay, the audit report. Rick, would you like to start us off?
I would like to, yes. Everybody should have, all board members should have the, this book here, which is the report, the audit report. And you should have a couple of letters that are as well, one from KDP to us and one from us to KDP. And then I handed out a kind of an outline that I typed up for those to follow tonight. I just, I want to say this upfront, is that the board is responsible for overseeing a lot of things. And one major area is financial. We are responsible to oversee the, the use of our funds and so forth. This audit report does this for us. And that's, so it assists us in that responsibility. I think it's an outstanding report that KDP put together. And I would encourage everybody to read it. Now that you look at it, it's luminous, it's over 60 pages in here. I wouldn't say do it in one sitting. But if you break it down, you know, a little bit each month, and you could read maybe five pages a month. And there's a wealth of information in here. So it wouldn't be a waste of time.
And we can come to you with our questions after we read the five pages?
No, you go to Michael, because he was on the committee as well.
Okay.
No.
Noted.
No, I would be happy to try. So anyway, the, if you look at the outline I gave you there, you could see it was held December 7th, that was two days ago. And there's a list of the people that were present. And now I'd like to direct you to see page 60 of the KDP report. It's the last page. And, and. What I want to, let's just go over what, this is a summary of the auditor's findings. And under financial statements, if you read through this, you'll see that they expressed an unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion is the best opinion you can get. And this is not unusual for our district. We get them every year. But that, I mean, that's excellent, so which gives me confidence in looking at the numbers. Number two there, they talk about no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls. So the internal controls are set up to safeguard the funds that we have. And again, that's an excellent statement to get according to, to KDP. And then the third one is no instances of non-compliance. So again, it's excellent. When you get into federal, federal awards, four through nine, again, highlight words, no significant deficiencies in number four, number five, compliance for each major program, internal control. And number six there, there were no audit findings to be reported. That means nothing negative. And if you, number eight, they have to do what they call a single audit. If you have government funds, and if it's over $750,000, they have to audit that. And if you look at number nine, it says it's a low risk audit key. And the benefit of that is when you're auditing that $750,000 or more amount with low risk, they have to look at 20% of the, of the documentation. If it were a high risk, they'd have to look at 40%. So a lot more work. And then the last two items there, the section two and three, financial statement findings, none. Federal award findings and questionable costs, none. So that summary says, it's been, our books and records are well maintained. And what's reported is, is very, is accurate. If you would now, let's, I want you to refer you to page A dash one through A dash three. And this is the audit report, the actual report, independent auditor's report. And refer you to the bottom of that page, page A dash one, opinions. And it ties in with the summary that we talked about, unmodified opinion. And there is where it's spelled out. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly, in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities in each major fund of Jackson County School District Number Four, as of June 30th, 2021. So that's whenever, just if you ever read financial reports of any kind, I always zero in on that opinion to find out what, what their conclusion is. Let's see. And if you want to, I'll also now direct you to the page before that, the table of contents. Again, I encourage you to read, read this report and then take it little bites, not a big one. But you could, here's an outline that you can follow, and you can see what they've covered. We're not going to go through all of it tonight, for sure. But I suggest you do read that. Now, let's look at page one. It's, okay, page one is after the ABC thing. The first on page one is the statement of net position. And this is, if you're familiar with accounting, say in the business world, this would be the balance sheet. And, and if you look down about halfway through, is the total assets and deferred outflows of resources is 117 million. That's, that's a hunk of change.
Money to keep track of, isn't it?
What's that?
It's a lot of money to keep track of.
Yes, it is. And luckily, we have the staff to keep track of it. So it would be, it would be a nightmare if we had a staff that did not. I've seen so many cases where people do not have adequate staff. They do not have the internal controls and so forth. And, and you know, you're, it's trouble. So that's a balance sheet. On the next page over, page two, is the statement of activities. And again, in the business world, they talk about the profit and loss statement. And that's what that is. And my last comment there is once again, Yasmin, Carabinus and her accounting staff received outstanding comments relative to her and their ability, cooperation, and knowledge. So it's, it's a real joy to do this annually and see this work continue. And so my hat's off to Yasmin and the crew for doing a great job. And the recommendation would be to accept the audit report. I noticed, and as Brent pointed out, this is a, we should perhaps move this to an action item tonight. So, because we want to get it wrapped up before the end of the year. So, so with that, I'll make the motion to move that we suspend the rules and move this to an action item. And I could use a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Rebecca. Reminder, this is to suspend the rules. Any discussion before I take it to a vote? I'll take it to a vote. Rebecca, would you like to go first? How would you like to vote?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We have suspended the rules. We are now moving this to an action item before we go any further. Does anyone have any discussion or comments about the lovely audit report? And thank you, Rick, for this cheat sheet you made for us this year. It was very, very handy.
So great.
So.
I, who do I direct this at? Denise, we have language, suggested language to approve the audit report. But it's been my understanding, we are not to approve it, we are to accept the audit report.
Can I make one comment before we move?
Please do.
I, I just want to echo Rick's words with Yasmin and her team. As you know, there are a variety of funds over the last couple of years that have been available to us. And, and one was, you know, the devastating Alameda Fire, a donation process that we took in-house that was, you know, done extremely well and to the auditor's delight. And then just a number of other federal funds that have come our way. And so Yasmin is, she works tremendously hard to make sure these systems are in place. She does a great job with her staff and teaching her staff and guiding her staff on, on safeguards. And it is, if you haven't turned in a receipt, you know about it. So, but we appreciate you, Yasmin and your team, and just thank you for all you do. I do want to also share that it is nice to have a CPA on the board to sit in on a audit report, because this, as you know, this is, could be some complicated stuff. And, you know, Rick in those meetings are, he just asks great questions. He really kind of digs into it. And so just appreciate your knowledge as you are reviewing the audit report. So thank you.
Thank you.
Rick, if we accept your challenge to read this like five pages a month, as our, you know, I can't sleep bedtime reading. Is there an exciting part that we should start at first?
No.
All right. Thank you.
If you're looking for excitement, I suggest you turn on the TV.
Just to know if there was, there was a good, you know, like a good meaty part to get you really amped up for it.
Start on page one.
Page one, okay.
And all you need is five pages.
Five pages.
A month.
Then it's a year. I think that's a really good challenge.
Well, I'll move that we accept the audit report prepared by KDP CPAs as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Polly. Any discussion before I take this to a vote? Hearing none. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
I vote yes. The audit report is accepted. Yay. Thank you all for your hard work. Next up is the revised out-of-state activity trips. As you, as we talked about before, we don't have to approve them, but they're letting us know that they're happening. Brent, do you have anything to add?
No, that's a process that we'll follow, is that we'll just continue to revise these when out-of-state trips are happening. So you know about them.
Thank you.
Good luck to the girls basketball team.
Any questions or discussion about this? Hearing none, we'll move on to OSBA board policy rewrite, sections A and B. I believe a lot of you have read this and asked great questions to staff or myself or OSBA. So I appreciate that. So I'm going to open that up to discussion.
Can I start just with a comment?
Yes.
This is, again, this board does not shy away from, you know, tremendous work that needs to be done when we're looking at our policies. And this is, this is a really big undertaking. It's really important. And we have needed to really dive into these policies for some time, as we have some that are out of date, as you can, as you've been reading. So I just want to thank the board for, for taking this on. I know it's a lot of work, a lot of extra work, a lot of, I don't think you receive overtime pay or anything like that. So just thank you for, you know, taking this on and taking it seriously. So thanks.
And I would like to say thank you, Denise, for the, yes.
Oh, my goodness.
You are a lifesaver. And I think everyone probably said thank you, Denise, in their head like 50 times while we were reading this. So.
This was so.
So this is the time, because this will be on the consent agenda next time. So this is the time to discuss any concerns or changes or questions. And then if we need to pull a policy or so out, we can. But since this is part one of eight or 10, Denise, I'm not sure, it's going to be a long process. So let's keep versus normally five per month. It's like hundreds a month.
It is the biggest section that we're taking on to. So.
This one is?
Yeah.
Cool. I want to say that I'm so grateful for such great staff. And as a new person, being able to ask the hard questions and get such a great response from like Tiffany and Brent. And I too am grateful for Denise explaining all the stuff for the kindergarten level that I needed when I first looked at this stuff to understand really what the heck we were trying to do. I think of this as like a KonMari method. We're cleaning this stuff out. We're keeping the things that bring us joy. And we're getting rid of the stuff. That's a duplication and is old and doesn't serve us anymore. So I'm excited about being part of this, actually. So.
I think it's really exciting too, because this gives a really full picture when we see policies over the years, just one here, one there, one here. It really.
Yes.
Doesn't give a full and complete picture. So as much of this as a beast that it is, I almost feel like as a new board member, this would have been really helpful to do.
So great.
In the beginning. So five years in, you know, yeah. So it is a beast, but it's also been very interesting. So it is a beast, but it's also been very interesting.
So who wants to start with their first question? Do you want me to start?
Um, yes, please, Sarah.
So I have a question about on policy, BCBA, which is the student representative to the board policy. And I emailed Spencer Lewis at OSBA. I haven't heard back. And it's just on the oath that's included in the optional language for that one, just if that was what other districts were using. I did like that there was a little bit of ceremony or something kind of to installing student representatives to the board because I feel like it's a really great program and I'm thankful that we have it. I just wondered at this, at this language, because it's talking about them upholding the constitution laws and the state of Oregon and the policies of the district. And since they don't have a voting privilege on the board and they may or may not be old enough to, you know, prosecute if they didn't follow. I just feel like there's potentially a better oath that we could come up with, or I just wanted to, I guess, maybe see what other people thought about that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I can say we typically haven't had our student representatives do it, but I think it's a, I think it would be a good practice. And I think, I think this is flexible. This is a recommendation. They are obviously a non-voting member of a board. So yeah, we would, we'd entertain anything that the board desires.
When I was doing research, this, I can't even remember, I apologize, before the study session, and I had like 15, and I still have my notes somewhere. I read through like 15 different boards, things, several of them had oaths. And I can help look at that. I can't remember off the top of my head what they were because that was months ago when I was reading them quickly. But I thought it was a good idea. I just don't know what their wording was.
And we could, if the board wanted to approve this without this oath, and then we can work on examples of oaths and bring this policy individually back for action after the first of the year sometime.
Yeah, or even, and I'm fine with, you know, I would like some sort of little something. I think that would be good.
Any other discussion on this policy? Is everyone okay about taking that oath part out and working on it later at a later time? So are you asking what the root, where it came from initially?
I asked Spencer Lewis, who is an OSBA, and I think helps or his department helps with this policy rewrite. And so to see where it came from, where, where they pulled it from, if it's similar to other districts. And I haven't heard back from him yet. So, but I only emailed him yesterday.
Oh, do you know?
I just want to say that it's better if the individual board members don't contact OSBA or make sure that you're contacting the right person because Leslie Fisher
Okay.
is our point of contact for this policy rewrite only.
Oh, that's good to know.
So there's different people that handle different things. I want to make sure that your questions are going to the right person.
Oh, that's good to know.
You can certainly direct them to her, but if you want to direct them to me, copy her or copy whatever, but I want to make sure they go through Leslie.
Okay.
She's the one that is working on it.
Oh, that's good to know. Okay. All right. And always copy in Denise. That's becoming the lesson to learn. Always copy in Denise.
Because Denise is the know-all and does all the work behind us.
So that, so I don't know is the answer. And I'm, I'm fine with leaving the optional language in. I just would like us to come up with something a little more personal for our district.
And we can leave it in. And then I think we're going to have some work sessions or I know we're, we didn't do a complete discussion this last work session on student reps. And we were going to kind of try some things out. So I know that this is something we're going to talk about. So we can leave it as is and change it before the next, yeah, I would say probably spring. Yeah. Okay.
Maybe the board liaison to student reps can come up with a
There you go. Ball and required. All write that down and remind him when he comes back. Yes.
We're looking to help you because I need to send what these decisions are to Leslie. So I just want to make sure that we're going to leave this the way it reads. Obviously, it's an answer of our district, but that helps.
Yes. Thank you, Denise, for clarifying. Okay. I think we discussed this policy. Does anyone else have any other policies they'd like to discuss? And just a reminder for those who have it on their, you might be smarter than me that have it on your computer. If you do the Ctrl F for find, it's easier than trying to scroll through hundreds of pages. I learned that the hard way the other night. I have, I have something. And I, I kind of asked this already, but you know what I'm going to ask. AE District Goals. I was kind of wondering the background on this, these statements and the goals, what the origin was, and if one, oh, I also, when I'm reading all these policies, there's a lot of repeating over and over and over again. I kind of would love for us to try to cancel some of that repetitive. I don't know. I, I don't know if I can articulate this well. I was at the district office session and I kind of articulated that, but trying to make sure that we're cleaning up. So we don't have a lot of repetitive things happening. I see, I see that currently in these. Can you explain what you mean by repetitive things? Because I'm a little confused.
Come for an example.
Are you, well, I guess, let me rephrase that question. Are you saying repetitive in the policy or policies are repetitive of each other?
Yes, the second. So it'll say it in this policy and it'll say the same thing in this other policy. Like, I don't know, I don't, I'm not familiar with this process, but why do we, why can't we clean some of that up?
Brent, do you want to answer this question?
Do you want?
You'll probably do a better job than me.
Well, we'll try to tag team it then. I don't know if we'll do it. Some, some policies are required and duplicate language. So it is important to, to have that. In the case, in your board policy adoption staff recommendations, there is policy AA, AE that is also repeated basically in policy IA. So this AE is a highly recommended, but you don't need that. This policy, it's not required and it is duplicated in policy IA. With that, I did share the staff recommendation that, that it fits more in the instructional goals. That's what, how it reads better. And the district goals we have in strategic planning and things of that nature, not policy, but, but other, other documents. So if the board chose to delete this policy, it will be covered more appropriately in IA instructional goals.
So he just said what I meant.
And that answered my, that answered my question because sometimes they have to be there, but when it's optional, then it's yes, we can do it. But sometimes it's like, no, we can't.
I get that part. Yeah.
Perfect. Okay. So the question is, this looks like this policy is optional. Staff is recommending that this could be deleted. So there wouldn't be as much repetition in our policies since we're cleaning them up. And that this is covered and policy IA, so we would still be covered. And so the question would be, is everyone comfortable with that decision? I'm seeing heads.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Did you get that, Denise? Okay.
Look at us deleting policy.
Anybody else have policy, a policy they want to discuss?
Oh, I had one more.
Okay.
Which is BDDH, which is public comment at board meeting. And Denise was lovely and gave me suggested language
Yeah.
to update the sentence so that it would include the, the new online comment form. So adding verbiage at the end of item five, if a person has more comments in time than allows, unable to comment due to time constraints, person is encouraged to submit additional comments to the board through the district. And then we could potentially add through the district website under the school board tab in the public comment section. So just giving that one other avenue of, for public comment.
I love this idea. Because I thought the same thing when I read it. And then I heard you ask that question and I was like, yeah, I had the same one. Like, or I had the comment, I guess. We just have that new, we have that new thing that we can use, right? Does everyone understand what Sarah suggested and Denise wrote nicely? That sounds great to me. Everybody else okay with that? Okay. Okay. Any, any other policy? Denise, you got that? Okay. I don't want to move too fast. Any other policies or that we would like to discuss?
I have one. It's BHD, the board member compensation and expense reimbursement. I thought, why do we even have to say that we will be reimbursed when we use ID to get into these events? I don't know. That just, that whole thing just read kind of weird to me.
Wait, wait, remind me. Say the letters again.
BHD. It's near the end. It is page 128, for those that have the digital copy. And can you point out what? Are we in this first paragraph or second one, Polly?
Hold on.
It's the second paragraph where it says about being reimbursed where our board members don't pay admissions as it is. So it's
It's kind of a moot point.
It's kind of a moot point. Yeah. Mr. Hurt might start charging you though.
I don't know. There's no pay to play fees or pay to enter fees.
No, it's been very good. But that's, I think that's standard policy for, for districts when volunteer on the board and being reimbursed. But that's not a practice that we use anyway about charging board members.
I love that Brent reads my mind of what I'm trying to say.
Just as is, it's kind of a moot point, but I think we just go as is.
Okay. Any other policies we would like to discuss?
Are you going to talk about the board operating procedure?
I can at the end. Yeah, I will. Okay. I will discuss that. Rebecca, did you have some questions?
I just have a question about why we're deleting the acronyms.
Oh, that's a good, that was, yeah.
Were they wrong? Or?
What policy are you referring to, Rebecca?
Uh, let me see. The new board member orientation, PHA AR. I think it is. It's page 124 and 125 and 126.
Okay. And what is, can you point us to the particular page of the language you were talking about? Or is it the whole policy?
Just the language. It's just all of the
Deleting that.
Yeah, deleting all of the acronyms. I'm just curious as to why.
If it's a policy acronym, that's more of just like a supplemental piece of information I would give you at board meeting or something. Again, we're just kind of the policy. That's just monkey.
That's helpful.
It kind of said that in the other policy that we're keeping. It said that that's in the new board member packet in the orientation that we would cover those. If I remember right. Okay. So question answered. Okay. And Sarah, you wanted me to talk about the, I forgot the name of the words now.
Board operating agreement.
So we were gonna, I think I mentioned this briefly at our work session, that there's a board operating agreement. There's a board norms and there's a board superintendent agreement. We haven't had any of those. OSBA has been recommending them recently in the last year and a half. And then they again recommended it during this rewrite. So they have a great version. And I think it's something that we will probably be putting on the agenda shortly. And I just wanted you to know that I am aware and staff is aware and it's something that kind of, I've been putting on the back burner for when we have time. And I think now I can't delay it anymore. It's time to put it on there. So I just wanted to kind of give you guys a heads up in case you came across that. Brent, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I just think the examples are good and then it would be a good board discussion.
Okay. Any other policies you want to talk about? Okay. Are we done with this section? Holy smokes. Great job, everybody.
That's because we're doing our homework.
Denise has a question.
No, don't be sorry. We want to make sure you're not asking it later. Yeah. Perfect.
We're leaving our current version. And basically, we knew about the proposed one. And Leslie's note to us was because we had an internal form in, an internal document in that original policy, she said we could include that in the new one or not include our form. And I think number suggested not include it. Is that correct? So I just want to confirm that you guys are okay with that.
Why wouldn't we include it? Or why do you suggest that we don't include it? Oh, okay. Okay. A clean out.
Sounds great. See, Polly's wish is coming true.
Denise, Denise described that really well in that, the email that she sent with it that's talked about what she's, what she's proposing. I had to read it like three times, but I did get the point.
Because my original note was, yes, I think we need a form, but the form is where it's supposed to be. It doesn't need to be duplicated.
Yep. This is the whole reason why we're doing this, to make it cleaner and correct. Because it kind of slipped through the cracks. Anything else you want to add, Denise? Okay, you're, you're, you're clear on?
I guess the only other thing is, did everybody read what's left? Oh, I should say stop recommendations for any policy that had optional on it.
You're talking about this in front of us tonight?
I know. I didn't.
Yeah.
I didn't look real extensively.
In the past, I mean, I want you guys to read it. In the past, we, I mean, the board, the staff is the one that's following the policies and they know best. So usually 99.9% of the time, we, we say, yeah.
And some of this is in policy already that we've decided and recommended that we just re-recommended.
So just to be clear, this is off our Word document thing. When we read through that, the stuff in brackets is what is in here. Right. So you took out the bracketed stuff and put it on this document?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay.
I'm getting the hang of this.
You're doing great, Polly, especially for your very first policy. All of you guys are doing great.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Just for the other sections, there will be a lot more of these because there's a lot more, a lot optional language. This was a big section, but there wasn't as much optional language. But the next sections will be smaller, but a lot more of this.
Would it be possible to try to get them before blue folder documents?
I'm going to mail out section C and D next week, early next week.
Yeah. And we'll try to get these optional language to you in advance, at least a week in advance. And we'll review that in the next couple of weeks, what we're going to be reviewing. So.
Is that what all of our policies look like in one binder?
No, not all of them.
There's a whole table. Is that just A and B?
Yeah, this is half of them. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't mean that you would get those recommendations in the next week, but I will be mailing those policies.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Just prior to, yes.
So is everyone okay with staff recommendations?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So are we completely, everybody on the same page before I move on to the next section of board policy rewrite? Okay, it looks like we are. Thank you, guys. This was great. Um, so now moving on to resolution discussion, and I have this up. And I am going to apologize because again, like I had talked about, am going to apologize because again, like I had talked about, I've gone to like six meetings in between these two meetings. And lots of things have come up and questions have been asked to me as Board Chair. And I felt like I couldn't answer them. I needed to have some discussion with the board on some things. So I'm going to tell you the questions I have and then we'll break them down piece by piece if that's okay with everybody. So that we kind of know. So, the first one is obviously ADM and, um, I talked to up in Salem last weekend. I talked to Jim Green. And he was very confident and said ADM is going to pass. I have no doubt about it. Dawn, don't be nervous. It's fine. And I'm like, Jim, you guys have told me this stuff before and I'm going to be nervous and I don't believe it's 100% fine, but I trust you. Lori Statensfield pulled me to us to the side and said, I know you're nervous. Um, I will help with test, with testimony when it's time, which will be coming up. So that's something, that's the first topic I want to talk about is, do we want a resolution? Do we want a letter? And how do we want to start getting ready for February for, um, AD, for ADM support? Um, our legislators, Pam Marsh is amazing and totally understands and she's like an advocate. What I'm hearing from, um, OSBA people and possibly Kosa and Brent can chime in is the other people that weren't in a fire affected areas or far away, don't 100% understand, um, the challenges that this is coming from and, and the data of like Polly shared earlier of how many families are still living in, in temporary housing. And so it would be really important, um, to let everybody in the state know. Um, and then secondly, we'll talk about other resolutions that people are passed. But let's start with the ADM. If that's okay. So, my question to everybody is, what do you think are, what do you want to do about ADM? Uh, Brent put in and Denise put in a letter from McKenzie School District. That was well worded. Um, I think a letter would probably be a great first step. And then I would, I want to discuss, um, prepping for testimony.
So who did they send this letter to? Oh, to the Speaker, oh, to the Speaker of the House of Representatives. Oh, okay.
And if it was a Board's Desire, staff could draft a letter for review for, for next meeting if, um, if that was something that they wanted to send to legislator. Legislator leadership or all legislators?
I would suggest all legislators. I mean, I don't want to bury them, but from what I'm hearing from, um, OSBA, the more legislators we can get on board, the better our chances are and the less nervous I'll be, we'll all be and we can all sleep a tad bit better. So from what I'm hearing in Salem is the more legislators, the better.
Well, we certainly can, uh, have something, a draft ready, um, for review, for review next time. We're doing something similar, as you know, with the OSAA, um, which our meeting is, is tomorrow about 80 or Monday about ADM. So we, we have some information. We actually put together a video that may be good to share as well with the legislator that talks about ADM and the challenges. So we, we have some resources.
That's what I was going to say is we, I, I think we should do a letter that it, similar to this list, personal or things that really, individually affect our district and what it would mean for us.
Okay. And Rick is coming back. So before we.
Is the OSAA thing, have you do with this change of the school and how we compete that thing?
Yeah, the OSAA is a school activities and athletic association. So, and, and just where we fit as far as number of students.
Okay, yeah, we talked about that before. So I just want to make sure. I feel like it's a good idea for someone to draft something up and, how, I just, I said this before, but I feel like we need to say this again. How can we rally our community besides us putting one letter to these people?
That's the next subject after we agree on this. So that's a great, Rick, just to recap, so, um, we were discussing and we're going to have staff, uh, put together a letter like McKenzie School District did, and send it out to all legislators so they are aware of the challenges our district is having and why the ADM is so important to us. So, um, I was about ready to make sure everybody was in agreement and then we're going to move on to step two of ADM.
That's great.
Okay. Okay. So thank you, Polly, for that segue. Yes. So that would be part of test, the testifying that, so basic. So that would be part of testifying. Letters would go out to, at a certain time would be testifying. Um, and then we would rally. That's what I want to talk about. Who would we want? We wouldn't want to start forming those letters. Um, probably, I would probably wait till the first of the year. We have till February, but as soon as after, right now, I don't want to ask people during Christmas and that kind of stuff. Um, but think who, I'm thinking organizations, I'm thinking families. Um, and I would just like, we can discuss that now, but also start thinking about who would be great to write lovely letters. Um, sometimes testify, you can write in letter and sometimes you can testify over, um, video chat, whatever their thing is called. Um, and we can, um, help support those that need to do that. But I don't know at this point if that's going to be an option yet. Do you know, Brent?
I do not know how they're going to take testimony out.
Yeah. So Lori kind of thought about it. The, the downside of testimony is that they usually tell you like a week sometimes before. Sometimes like it's like five days. And so, but I think if we talk about it and we start getting things in place and maybe letters in place and families in mind and organizations in mind, that would put us better. But I'm willing, I'm really willing to hear what everybody else's suggestions are.
I just have a clarifying question. Is there like a limit of letters or testimony that people can provide? Is there like a minimum, maximum?
No, not when it comes to testimony. There can be as many as there wants. There is sometimes a time limit on testimony when they do it live. Um, and each session, it's a little different. It seems like they change the rules per session. And since this is a short session, I would imagine testimony, oral testimony will probably be limited, but written testimony usually isn't limited. Um, so as far as I know, the written won't be, but that could change. And I don't 100% even know if they're even going to open testimony. Rumor is they will, but it's not 100%.
And I just, I think we'll know right away where this stands. I mean, this is the, what we're hearing, you know, first and foremost priority, right? When they get into session. So, uh, we'll know in that really first few days where, where it stands, so.
Is it appropriate to ask our associations to, write letters of support for?
Like Booster Club or something?
Like the, like the Teacher Association Classified, I was pointing at, which wasn't very polite. But, um, that, it was the teacher and the Classified Union perhaps, or boards for their support.
So my suggestion is to come up with some ideas, because I don't know about you guys, but I think better when I'm not like sitting in a chair in front of a microphone. And we can discuss it at the next meeting as well and get things in place. And by then we might have a better idea of how it's going to look. And I just want to be prepared so that when it comes up, we have things in mind and we have supports for those that need support on testifying, because it can be scary for those who are doing it their very first time and, and, but I feel like those might be the most important voices to be heard. Um, and I think it's a great step to support those. So I know for me, when I first testified, it was like, woo, this is awesome. Let's do some more. And it kind of moved you. But maybe not everyone's like me. So, um, but it's good to, to realize your, the importance of your voice. And so I want to be able to support those and not just like, oh my gosh, tomorrow this has to be done. Would, would, oh, go ahead.
Who do you want us to send the suggestions of? People to Denise? Is somebody going to be compiling a list?
Well, I don't know. Denise, do you want them to send it to you or do you want them to send it to me and we could discuss it the next? Would, which however you guys would like to send it to. So, yeah, and I would be more than happy to help, so.
Would it be appropriate to ask Rep. Marsh and, um, Senator Golden to like, what, right, Senator? Yeah, um, to, for their input on who might be a good person to ask for this?
Sure. I think that that, I think that, um, that would be good. And I think the people that have been involved the whole time, Brent and Tiffany and, um, Nancy and different organizations, I think they all have some great ideas of who would, and I, I have imagined that once the word gets out, people are going to want to help.
Right.
That's, that's my hope. And I think that that's, the, uh, the way I've seen the community respond to our district and to the fires, they've all been like, what can I do? What can I do? And so I suspect that hopefully lots of people will, will come out. Okay, so we're all under, we're all moving forward on that. So next, as you guys have seen, there's resolutions. Each districts are doing resolutions on local control and other challenges their districts are facing during COVID. Um, I have been in two, Michael and I have been in two meetings, um, just locally, regional, um, Southern Oregon School Boards. They've been virtual and there's been talk about each district passing the resolutions. And then in the spring, February or March, all the districts that had passed a resolution, then possibly writing a letter to the Governor, ODE and OSBA, that we have all passed resolutions. They're all different because each school district is different and we all are facing different challenges. Um, I've been asked how our board feels about this. My response and Michael's response is our first priority is ADM. And, um, so I just, I know the ADM is coming in February since, um, Southern Oregon group has said February or March, um, I just wanted to know, kind of have a discussion. We haven't discussed what we want to do, what, what we want to move forward to. Um, right now, um, things change so quickly and from rumors up in Salem, there's going to be some other changes probably the end of the year. I don't know if you're hearing the same thing, Brent, but, um, the governor has some decisions to make due to, I can't remember the legalese, but Jim Green said it really fast and it made it sound like she had some decisions and things, things could possibly change end of December, beginning of January. And hopefully, um, she will be talking to OSBA Board of Directors sometime in January to give us some updates. So it might be wise if we choose to, to wait until these, um, announcements might be made. Plus, we don't have another board meeting until after that. So I'm just opening that discussion, what we think, um, if we want to do a resolution and what's important to our district. Or we can think about it as well. I don't have to have an answer for anyone. Um, yes.
I like the idea of the resolution, but I wouldn't know what, at the moment, what to put in it. Yeah, like what is all our main options?
Um, and OSBA has been helping several districts do them. Um, they're all out there. Brent and I did a quick conversation when we were doing the agenda. Um, I, I don't want to, I can give you some suggestions. I want to hear everybody else's first before I say mine, just because I don't want to bias anybody. Does that make sense?
But I think you as our Board Chair with connections to what other school boards have been talking about, hearing the suggestions would also be helpful in us coming, you know, because we're kind of talking about this in a nebulous kind of way. So if you can kind of steer, steer our ship a little bit here and get on board and.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I'm like, being the boss is, I'm being very cautious about that. So thank you, Sarah. Um, so like, you might've seen Eagle Points. Um, theirs is just talking about local control. I've seen other districts around. I think Brent and I had.
Control around what issue?
They're just saying they're very, very vague.
Okay.
And saying the districts want back local control. They will work with their health departments. I personally feel that that's too vague and that we should have our concerns in there as well. Um, Brent and I have talked about, uh, that it's important for our families, especially those that have gone through trauma to have like, I feel like it's always like, what's going to happen next? The governor's making an announcement. Everyone doesn't know what that means. And I think it's important for the governor to realize the trauma and the stress that every time there's a change is going through to these families. Like, oh my gosh, am I going to have to get childcare? Oh my gosh, is they reducing the school out? I mean, all these things go through families' heads is, that's what I'm hearing. I know they go through my head. So I think the, I would like to be more concrete and show what our families need and what our district needs. And that each district is individual. I've been talking to several, like Pinehurst has 17 students in their school. Five of them have left because of mask mandates. Well, they all live in the same area. They're all hanging out together. So they're, they're a total different district than us. And we're a total dis, different district than Medford. And I think that it needs to be, it needs to be said. And sometimes we had, we were open. We got the exception. We were open, had students in longer. We had, I think our students were in the longest of the valley. We had the lowest numbers in the valley. So I think we can prove, we have data behind it that we can make good decisions. And we want to be able to make good decisions for our students. That's just my, my personal, that's why I'm kind of, so I would like something more focused. Instead of being vague, like give us local control, I would like to have, so that people reading the resolutions understand that we really have been trying to listen to our families and we're really advocating for what that they want. Um, I would really like some more, I don't know what you want to call the language. Solid?
Specific.
I think clear, accurate, specific, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe some, um, predictability in decisions. I think that's what is frustrating in, in a lot of ways is, you know, where, where is the metrics? Where is, uh, what is the next marker? So, um, you know, that when trauma is present in the lives of kids and families, you know, predictability is a, is super important.
Thank you. That was, that was the roundabout way. This is why they're super none of the year, because you can read your board mind, your board member's mind and say it so nicely. That's exactly, that's exactly, I think is important, the predictability and the having goalposts and having, um, I feel like so many times where it's like, oh my gosh, how do we get out of this? And to have some kind of light at the end of the tunnel would be nice.
Agreed.
But we would probably be one of the very only boards that went very specific and not broad.
I think that's fine.
I think we have a unique place and a unique situation with the fires and COVID and all the impacts here. And I think that's okay if we're being specific.
Okay. It seems like sometimes we're a long way from Salem. So I think it's important for us to have that.
Okay. I think we're all kind of on the same page of that. Um, what do we want the next steps to be? Do we want, um, staff to talk to OSBA? And, or do we want some board members involved? What would be best, Brent, I'm asking you and Denise, what would be the best next steps that would be easier for you guys?
Well, we can look at, based on this discussion here, we can, uh, look at some drafting, uh, uh, some resolutions based on this discussion and some examples from OSBA and around the region and, and try to come up with some option for the board to look at at the next board meeting and have for information discussion.
And I know, um, Michael's not here, but he's been with me because it's been board chairs and vice chairs and he's been very, um, active in these discussions as well and has came up with some very good ideas as well. So I know that he was like, I want to be involved in this discussion too. So I think, um, that would be great that he would like to.
We can draft them and reach out to board members and, and have something that, um, at least can be discussed and can be modified at that time too. Be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, this is, there's one board meeting, but this is all great information that really needed to be discussed. Okay. Okay, in-person board meeting. Again, this is something we haven't discussed.
Some only because we, we really haven't had the opportunity to do so. So while it's been on our radar and, and we've had hybrid meetings with admin team here, sorry, you know, it's, it's not that we haven't thought about it, it's just that we haven't had the opportunity to really have the discussion.
Exactly.
So Ken, if, I felt like the, we're starting indoor and it's another way to include our families and, and have it. I'd love to go back to in-person board meetings. So I'm all for it.
I am too. I'd like to see it.
I also really do appreciate having the online option as well because I think it's great if, if someone was missing and, and able to come or wanted to participate but physically couldn't get here. I think that having an in-person with also and so, I guess I'm not necessarily ready to get rid of the online presence as well. Thank you. Doing that, but.
Yeah. So if we did do the in-person, would that get rid of the online?
No, I believe not. And when it first, this first started, oh, gosh, I don't know when, a year and a half ago. We decided after like three or four meetings, we really liked it. And I think it was Rick that said, you know, sometimes I travel and I miss the board meetings and I want to go. And I know a few, few times people have done that and it's been very handy. And it's handy for public who see something on the agenda and want to chime in. Some people prefer in-person and some people kind of prefer to be behind the screen or whatever and just listen. So I would, I would think both for a while, if the, if that's okay with staff.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I think, I, I don't, I mean, to tell you the truth, I don't know if I see us ever taking that online version. Often there's something, you know, happens that, that's when you talk about accessibility and, and participation from our community. I think having that option is, is great for our families. So.
And then it's recorded so people can watch it later at a later time. Because sometimes I know like, it's like, oh, that was discussed at this board meeting a couple of months ago. And then I can go back and look at it because sometimes I'm not on top of things. And I'm sure I'm not the only parent that does that.
No, I like the online. I like that the recordings are up there as well.
Well, I do miss the interaction with the principals of the schools during coffee breaks and so on.
Yeah. And, and talking to public before they, before the meeting starts and saying hi and, and putting a face to the email or, or whatever is always nice. And yeah, I mean, I agree. I, my question though is what if we, where can we, what is, if we keep it here in this library, what are our capacity?
Yeah, that's a good question. What I'd suggest if we do in-person in our January meeting, that we have the setup like we did in the comments area and make sure we review that. And I know that's, that's an educational after hours environment for our kids. But I think to do it safely, that'd be the safest venue. And, you know, we would, we would still follow all the mitigation with the spacing and the mask requirements, which will be important for in-person events.
I have another question. I'm sorry. I'm wondering about the theater space too. I haven't been in there, so I have no clue. And I did hear John say that people are already, you know, signing up for spots. So I'd hate to make the kids lose a night because of a board meeting. But I'm wondering, since that's a big space, there's room. The problem with, not the problem, a challenge with the commons is that it's like an entryway and sometimes people come in and there's noisy or you can hear the game or whatever. So I don't, I don't know.
We can look at that. I think between Chris and we can look at the technology there to see if we can also run the online format as well. So that's, that's a good suggestion.
Would we, would we be setting it up exactly like the last time we've been in colder weather? Have the people sit outside of the, or would we set it up to where they could sit in the common area?
Yeah.
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 I think that's part of the in-person is we're not, that we were afraid we were going to hit capacity. So we did that so that everyone that was planning to come, we wouldn't have to turn people away because that's not very nice and we don't want to do that. So yeah, so no, it's way too cold indoors. Yeah. So if you guys can look at the options.
And we'll get a sense of, you know, you know, how many people are showing up, as you heard tonight on a public comment, you know, nine or 10 patrons coming in. And so that's, you know, we'll definitely be planning for more, but we'll get a feel for how many public are showing up on a regular basis.
I think it's great that public are reading our agendas and coming when there's something that they feel like they need to have a voice for. So I think that that's great. So there might be a meeting where, you know, we're talking about stuff that is fine. And there might be a meeting that we have a lot of people come. So.
I really like that opportunity to have both to really increase that accessibility. And are we going to have interpretation services again for these meetings? Do you know what we're going to do for?
Yeah, if that's requested, we can, we can have that. But and actually, I think it was a policy that we're looking at the request prior if they need those interpretation services.
And are we going to provide education around how to request that?
We, we can certainly do that. Yeah.
That'd be really great.
Yeah.
And kind of a, this is a tangent and I apologize, but in my brain, in the beginning of the year, we're going to talk about outreach into communities. So that might be something when we go to different underserved populations that we want to get, build a relationship with is, is, that's a good discussion about how to access our board meetings and, and access availability to us and have their voice be heard. So thank you.
Love, I love, love, love that. And the different populations require different strategies to really be intentional and and thoughtful when we're inviting communities in. So I, I really love that. That's where we're going to go.
We'll have that discussion later, but I think that that's, I want to keep that in mind so that we can think about it. Okay, so we're all in agreement that we would like in-person back and that we like having virtual and that we want to make sure we offer different ways of interpretation. And that we are going to look at different spaces. Did I recap that correctly? Okay, so I think, go ahead, Brent.
And it would be nice. I know when we go back to in-person, you know, we've, we've really enjoyed this facility. But I think one of the, you know, special things about this board is that they travel to the different communities and of our district to, to make it even more accessible there. So we'll also be looking at the technology options at those venues to see if we can continue to utilize the other schools.
That'd be great.
There's something like Orchard Hill has a lot of new development that are, you know, buildings and stuff that I haven't seen. And I would love to go into the buildings. And I know just walking down the hall, I walked the long way because color guard was practicing and walking and seeing the, the cork boards and all the flyers and stuff was just, I was like, wow, this is so amazing. So I'd love to do that every school. I'm seeing everybody say yes. So thank you so much. Okay. So next is review of next agenda. That was in our blue folders. And again, if you, Brent and I meet like a week and a half before to discuss agenda, so you can contact him or I if you have something that you think that we have missed or need to be on there. I don't even see it at this moment. I saw it earlier today.
Last page in the blue folder.
There it is. Thank you. I had the wrong tab. Okay. And basically, there's not a lot. Oh, thank you, Rick. There's not a lot on there, just the regular. And then the, we'll have more discussion items. And we'll probably be discussion, discussing ADM again and resolutions, which is not added on this.
Yeah. So we can add a number six to strategy for legislative session for ADM. Seven, information and discussion for resolution. And then we could add, I think we could have a, a action item for a letter to the legislature, which would be good timing, I think, prior to the legislative session in February. So we could add that action item number one to review and approve.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Okay. Can we also talk about if, if it's not the next meeting or one meeting in January about rescheduling a community listening session again?
Yes. And do we only have one meeting in January? Okay, so we could put that information in discussion about a community.
Just talking about what we want to do.
Start planning that.
I didn't hear that. Sorry.
For a community listening session.
Oh, yeah.
For the, after the first of the year. So getting kind of a date on the calendar and seeing where, or what format we'd like to use. Starting to have the conversation.
True.
And I don't know about you guys, but I've been looking at different formats and it's been discussed at OSBA, the board chair, the first half of the board chair cafe, Janet came on that was here that helped us and was discussing ideas. And then different board chairs talked about how they did their listening sessions and some ideas. So I think I've been kind of watching and, and I, I think that's a great time to discuss. So in between now, if you're bored and want to look at other school board listening sessions, you can maybe come up with a great idea.
And you've completed your five pages of reading and the auto.
Yes. Don't forget that. It's very important. Okay. Anything else before I close this meeting? Thank you all online that stayed with us. And thank you, everybody. Meeting is adjourned.